Of that meeting sealed until, in the opinion of the majority of the board, the circumstances no longer apply.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next item is Children's Yoga at Greenie Park, Alicia Carroll. Yes, please. State your name just so we...
Sure. My name is Alicia Carroll, and I have been working with children for over a decade, and I wish to host Children's Yoga at Greenie Park this summer. I had written down some tentative dates and timeframes. I was thinking a slot for toddlers and a slot for school-aged children. And I just picked a few dates. I'm not sure if you guys read the summary I had written for the rec department last night, but basically that, but just instead of, so all at Greenie Park. And I appreciate your consideration in the matter.
Okay, did you fill out a permit request for this?
I did not, no.
Permission to use town property?
So, so that's, before she did that, I just wanted to get the opinion of the board, because she spoke to the rec commission last night. The rec commission is in favor of it, obviously. It falls with the selectmen to make the final decision. But Alicia tells me she is insured, and she will sign any hold harmless or anything like that. We want to provide to her. She wants to open it up to anyone who wants to participate, so she would use our town website or whatever to advertise. We were in favor, because Greenie Park really doesn't get used much in the summer. And the, you know, she would be doing this for some profit. So that's the only thing the board, you know, typically we've, we've let people do things, like vendors do things at town properties. So we just want to make sure the board is okay with that. And if the board is okay with that, then Alicia was going to go and take the necessary steps to make sure everything was squared away, so.
Well, I think offering yoga activities for kids at the town park is a good activity to be offering. I have no problem with, you know, but I would like to see you submit the application for the use. And would it be the building inspector or the code enforcement officer, just to ensure that as a business, she's all situated?
I think so. I think, I think typically what you guys have done before, I'm looking at Diane and Nancy, is that you just make sure they have the insurance and everything. And the permit's usually date-based, right? So it's not like a forever thing. It's whatever her date ranges are.
Correct.
And then we, we just approve.
Yeah, so it is just...
I do have my insurance paper here as well.
It just tells us, you know, which town property that you want to use.
Yeah.
The purpose for using the property, the days, weeks, or, you know, et cetera.
The timeframe.
Exactly. So it gives us an idea of when it's going to be used.
Sure.
And then this also allows us to inform fire, police, et cetera, you know, that yes, there are people there, they're allowed to be there, et cetera.
Perfect.
Okay, so anybody have any questions, comments? Nope?
I would just, I would move to approve this, you know, from a, from a high-level standpoint, as long as she fills out the necessary paperwork. I, this very messy motion I'm making here, but I would...
You'd like to try again?
Yeah, let me try that again. So I move to approve Alicia Carroll's yoga plan for the summer, pending filing of the necessary paperwork.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? Just to have on the record, what did you plan on your expected days of use, hours of use?
So I was thinking two Saturdays and two Thursdays, two in July and two in August. I did July 13th and July 18th, and then a second session, August 3rd and August 8th. So a Thursday Saturday.
And approximate hours?
Between for Saturday morning, 9:30 to 11:15, and Thursday afternoon or evenings, 4:30 to 6:15, to hold two sessions.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to skip fire, rescue, or step that one down, so that we can go to Heat Street drainage issue. Mr. Donovan?
Yes?
Would you please come up and give us a synopsis, summary of the issue?
Well, I, me and my wife moved here eight years ago.
Can you first tell us who you are, and then speak into the mics, so we can read?
Yeah, Timothy R. Donovan, Jr.
What was the first name?
Timothy.
Timothy?
Me and my wife moved here eight years ago, in '11, and it's coming down the hill. And over the past couple of years, we've noticed drainage. We've called Mike, I don't know his last name. He came down a couple of years ago to, to grade the road. And after this past winter, this is the worst I've seen, my pool, it looked like a big cesspool. And my wife went online, and there was some kind of drainage thing that was looked at in '09 and '14, and I would like this addressed, because I can't do this. I'm into over $2,000 already right now with chemicals. I had to drain the pool, pressure wash it. I just had two truckloads of water come in. And I don't want to do this every, every spring. Because it was supposed to be a culvert and easement for a drain down there. I know years ago, some guys put a bunch of cookie cutters down the other end of Heat Street, and that road was paved. And for the last eight years, coming down that hill, it's torocious. And all they do is just fill the portals. I would like to know what's going to be done with that.
Thank you. For the board, we do have several pictures of the stormwater as it's running off, and of the direction that the stormwater is running into on his property. And you can see how it actually does flow pretty much into his pool. He's attempted to redirect it a few times, but his attempts have been overridden by the water. So, thank you. Molly, did you have anything to speak to about this as well, since you're the next property?
Yeah. Hi, my name's Molly Wilson. I'm here with also Billy. We live at 9 Heat Street, which is...
What was the last name?
Wilson. Which is just one house up, so we're actually in the middle of said hill. I just wanted to, you know, since this was being brought up, addressing Heat Street here. One half the road looks gorgeous. The half we live on definitely is in need of some help. I know it's a scenic road. I know that there'll be some things about scenic road to be able to improve said road. But I definitely would, you know, just wanted to speak up and say, I definitely want to see some improvements done to this road. The patchwork is just done to the best level it can be. And the road's just in shambles. I mean, it is what it is. You patch it. The road is also very dangerous in that section, I'll add. The traffic going to Greenie, the traffic going to the houses down at the other end, some new houses going down at the other end, just more traffic. I know there's going to be a lot of big trucks coming in. If said plans go through, it'll just degrade the road farther. I mean, it is what it is. We have a lot of equipment, we have a lot of trailers coming in and out of that driveway, just because we are a farm, we have the animals, we're the house with all the animals essentially, and all the tractors, so that's us. So yeah, I just wanted to speak up and say, I definitely would want to see some improvements done, and I know Billy would say the same thing. So, yeah, that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Road Agent, could we get you to come up? I know you have your plans as far as what you get done during the year, et cetera. Where does Heat Street fall into this?
As far as the timeframe? Uh, Mike Pevero, Road Agent, as far as the timeframe goes?
Yes.
It's not this year. And, and, is it Dun, Mr. Donovan? I think it was two or three years ago. I haven't spoken to Mr. Donovan, but I spoke to your wife a couple of years ago, and did go down there and did some best-of-our-ability regrading of the swale to divert it to, it's kind of like a haul road that's just prior to the pool. Because if you guys are familiar with that section of Heat Street, which is in dire repairs, you know, it needs repair, there's no argument there. And I'm more frustrated than anybody, because I only have so many pennies to go every year to replace roads. If the board would like to give me more money, I'll do more roads. But that's a conversation for a different time.
Now, that road grant that...
The highway block grant we got, which is block grant money, but that's allocated this year to do repairs that are desperately needed on Thornelle. Every year, roads deteriorate. I'm never going to keep up to them, nor is any other highway department or federal agencies. They just deteriorate faster than we can repair them. So Mike Vignali, who's the town engineer, myself, doing evaluation every three or four years, and we go to the worst-needed roads. And he, it is a desperately needed repaired road. No, no argument there, and there's probably another dozen in town that I could list right off the top of my head, but I only have X amount of pennies. So in the meantime, I mean, I'll get with Mr. Donovan and his wife, and we'll do the drainage again on the edge of the road to try to mitigate that. And it does, it goes into his pool, I knew that two or three years ago.
Okay.
But completely eliminate that, that's reprofiling that whole road. Because that's a roller coaster right there. Just before 9, there's a dip, that holes all the road, and then you go after 9, and it, everything in front of Donovan's pool goes negative both ways.
Yep.
And it's the only way the water has to go. So in order to completely do away with that, that is reprofiling that whole road. That's probably filling that road three or four feet, and then doing something on a retaining wall basis in front of his pool. So it's, it's not a lickety-split. And again, as you mentioned, it's a historical scenic road, so my fingernails get peeled off every time I go to do repair the historical, you know, scenic road. So, I mean, we'll address it. In the meantime, I'll get with you guys and mitigate it the best I can. I mean, and, and so we can come up with some more coins and go down there and repair that one.
All right, and is there any other grants out there that we could go for that might help pay for that kind of thing?
You guys can dial for dollars. None that I'm aware of. Highway block grant's the only one that I'm aware of that is, is set up and structured for highway repairs in the state of New Hampshire.
That's, that's the one, we're talking about the one that Governor Sununu gave us, like, two years ago?
No, well, they ended up, two years ago, having a supplement amount of funds and doubled our highway block grant that year.
Okay, yep.
So we got, in every town, not just us, it was the entire state. Somehow they ended up with a surplus, divided accordingly, which was tremendous. I was able to double my road repairs that season.
So, so it sounds like we have a Band-Aid, but that's, it's a Band-Aid until we can correct the problem in the priority, unfortunately, for Heat Street.
That is correct. I probably have 20% in this town's road infrastructure is Band-Aid.
Yep. And, I mean, I drive the road pretty much every day, so I know what you're talking about. The, it's one of the worst in town, but...
No, it's right up there.
Yep.
And it may hit the list next year, I just don't know until we reevaluate what we get done this year with the funds we have.
Yeah.
And that's what we did a couple of years ago. And I'm sure we're over the... Yep. Yeah, and we'll mitigate it the best we can until we can do a road repair.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, there was one other question regarding this property. Due to the storm runoff going into the pool, there was a request for the town to assist with some of the expense incurred in having to drain and refill the pool because of the damage caused by the stormwater. Did you see that, Board?
The letter, yes.
I had sent that email out.
$3,000?
Are we pausing the meeting?
No.
Okay, just checking. So do you guys have, do you have the email pulled up?
The letter.
Yes, yes.
So I'm not entirely sure, what is the request for $2,000 specifically?
I don't think your strip is working.
No, I don't know that. That's, it's not plugged in to anything.
When does this go, Dee?
I think it plugs into the surge protector.
No, it is a strip.
Can it reach ours?
No, that's not that long. No.
Well, this is what I'm referring to here. So you can take a moment to read it. Now, you've read the email?
Yep.
I read it, yeah.
You've read the email? All right, so, as I said, the issue here is the storm runoff flowing into their pool has caused gravel, salt, sand, et cetera, to flow into their pool.
And this has been happening about three years, is what I'm hearing from Mike?
Actually, longer than that. It's just, it's been mitigated a few times.
When it was built, it began? The problem began when the pool was built, or years later?
I couldn't tell you how far, that would be a question for the owner. Jim?
Yes?
We have a question for you. Could you come up to the podium, please?
Can you wait one second? Sorry, I don't miss office maybe. Can you handle it, please? Thank you.
Can you plug this in?
It doesn't reach.
Yeah, it reaches.
Well...
Can you see?
It should meet.
You're welcome. Okay, so Kate, could you ask Mr. Donovan the question?
The question was, so you, this has been a problem for several years for you?
What's that?
The drainage issue into the pool?
Uh, yeah, but this is, this is the worst. Like I said, my wife talked to Mike a couple of years ago, and they did grade it, but this is, this, this year was the very worst.
And did you get the pool, like, three years ago, or four, when it all began? Or there were three good years?
No, the, the pool was there when we bought the house, and so...
So you've had years where the pool was fine, but it's getting worse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions?
I guess my, my only thing is, I'd, I'd want to see more of an assessment of exactly cause and effect. I'm not sure who could do that for us, but...
Okay, um...
Um, because as, as I sit here, it's, it's kind of abstract for me, because I, I haven't been out there and seen it.
Oh, did you see the pictures?
Well, even with the pictures.
There's one really good.
Yeah, we have, I think there's a video too.
And homeowners' insurance doesn't cover this sort of thing?
Yeah, but then your insurance would go up.
I'm just asking.
See, I never even thought of that. Problem I didn't want to... Either way, I have to suck up across, and then homeowners and law, or thought it needed something, oh, by the way, they canceled.
If you're going to speak, you really need to speak into this, so I have it?
Okay.
On recording? Only because when I go to do the minutes, I don't have, I can't hear you. Okay, thank you.
No, I mean, I never thought of homeowners. I don't, I really don't think that they would cover it, but even, even if I did for a couple thousand dollars, you know, you put a couple claims in, they're going to cancel you, and God forbid, you know, you have a fire or anything, and you really need it, you're canceled, and, you know...
So, cause and effect, the engineer would be able to tell us that? Would that be right, Mike?
I can probably simplify the answer right now.
Okay.
Cause and effect?
Yeah.
The road's deteriorated. The water has nowhere to go, because it's in a sag or a low-lying area of the road of, you know, it's this, it's a bowl. So all the water comes from both sides of that. At the bottom of it, where it has really nowhere to go, it has to go off the roadway, which is right in front of his pool. It, it's just, it's just, yeah, there it is. There it is. I mean, it's just, it, it's just, if you drive it, Matt, I know you've been up there, it's just, and the road's been like that forever. It hasn't collapsed or changed, it's just the way that road's profiled. It's in terrible shape, it needs to be dealt with. I mean, I can get Mike Vignali and do an assessment of it and see what it's going to take, because if we do drainage, outlets, or we do any type of drainage, with the new regulations, unless it's a culvert, and another meeting soon, like, really soon, because Mike Vignali's been in touch with me for the past month. We have that new regulations. Yeah, they're getting very complicated, they're going to get a lot, very expensive, and they're going to eat up a lot of my time, which I don't have. Because there's reports and stuff, outfalls, and where it goes, and testing, and all that good stuff. But that doesn't address this issue. This issue is, you know, I can get with Mike, see what it's going to take to fix a problem, problem permanently, but, I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat it for anybody standing here. It's not happening this year.
But would you be in agreement that the stormwater runoff has caused gravel, salt, silt, et cetera, to run into their pool, causing them to have to drain and clean and refill?
Would I agree with it?
Yes.
You kind of put me between a rock and a hard place. I wasn't standing there looking at it. I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I didn't witness it.
Okay.
So I can't confirm nor deny, was that right, Matt?
That's it.
Thank you.
That's it.
But the probability?
Oh, is the probability there? Sure. Their, their pool is lower than the lowest part of that road, went back to gravity.
So does that help, or do you need more?
So I'm, I'm not saying, personally, I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no, I just need more information.
I would agree with you.
Okay, I, I'm just asking, who do we want more information from? And what more information do we need, so we know what the next step to take?
I think a few, a few titles mentioned here tonight, we need information from, and I think the board also has to talk about some other people we could get information from.
I agree.
Can I just, just because I clarified in my own head, we're looking for more information for what determination?
To how to handle this, because it's a...
Help, yeah?
The whole purpose of this, of this portion of this discussion is to determine whether or not the town will assist in recuperating the property owners in recuperating some of the...
Oh, okay, above my pay grade.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm good.
That's why we're not, we're only asking you for what you do know, you know, from your expertise, but we're not asking you to make any decisions.
All right, if you need more information to get to a conclusion on that end, let me know what you need, and I'll give you what you need.
So, one of the things that Matt was saying, he wanted was more information to prove cause and effect, that yes, it was, you know, the condition of the road, the slope, the flow of the stormwater, you know, going into the pool is what caused, you know, did cause this to go into their pool, for example. Are you able to tell us, if you were to go and take a look and see what they had, check out their videos and their photographs, would you be able to say, yes, the stormwater runoff did cause silt, et cetera, foreign materials to go into their pool?
Can I jump in here?
Go right ahead, Matt.
I think what I'm, what I'm saying is, we're not going to solve it tonight.
Well, no, I realize that, I am.
Right, and, and we need to talk more offline as a board, I think.
Offline?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to look at precedents, speak to council, just make sure we handle this properly.
Yeah.
And we need a little more information. But we completely empathize as it's a team of pictures.
Discussing with council can be done in non-public, because that's council. I, I was just looking for what purpose to not discuss in public, because that's, this is...
Well, we've discussed it in public. I'm, I'm saying, I'm, and I've already spent more time on this than I care to spend, but...
Matt, you're in trouble now anyhow, so just keep going.
Exactly, yeah. The, what I'm saying is, we're not going to arrive at an answer tonight. As I said earlier, I'm not saying I'm one vote. I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no. I need more information. We're not going to get the information tonight. We'll have to get it in between. We have another meeting coming up, we can put it on the agenda.
Okay, and the question is, that I have, is rather than just putting it on an agenda, what more information do we need, and who are we going to get it from?
We'd move to go into non-public under 91A, 3C, E.
Do we have a second?
A second question.
Second.
All right, we are going to go into non-public, and we will be right back.
Can we just go out back? Matt, can we go back?
Can we just go out back? Matt, can we go out back?
I will tell you, in the past, probably 10 days, between conference calls and meetings, there's been 15 of them trying to expedite this thing. It's been sadly fairly painful. It's a little premature, but we might have to have an emergency meeting next week because if I get drawings this week and we can finalize numbers, I don't want to wait any longer. As soon as we have hard, real hard documents, hard drawings and assess a hard number to it, I'd like you guys to see that and see what it is sooner than later.
So we can have an unplanned or an additional meeting, not necessarily an emergency meeting, but just schedule a meeting within, so we can still follow the 24-hour posting, et cetera, of the meeting?
That's fine. Whatever works in the technical aspect of it, but fingers crossed I'll have some drawings by the end of the week and then I'll keep you guys updated, but still, I'm at their mercy.
All right, so when it comes to you having the documents for us to review and sign, then let us know and we'll get that meeting scheduled as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And just, I always like to underline the fact here when we talk is the idea about doing this upfront work now is that things don't have to be done later. So the idea is upfront work blessed by the state, then we start moving out on ordering, on breaking ground. All the work gets done and it's not a, you get a stop because you did something wrong in an inspection, right? So we're, the reason this is taking so long now is because we don't want to have to backtrack.
Well, I'm gonna, let me throw something in because I don't know, to be honest with you, I don't remember what my last update was to you guys because we've missed a series of meetings, but Matt just jogged something in my thought process. We had a pretty good handle on this two months ago, two and a half months ago. That all went to square one when a major player of local authority is no longer with us because he was in the loop. He is no longer in the loop. There's a new player in his position. We brought him on board and it's not that the rules and regulations have changed or anything's trying to be hidden or secretive, but now it's 100% to the state approval first and then it'll come back down to local jurisdiction. Before it was a little bit somewhat kind of backwards. Local jurisdiction was gonna take it and then get it blessed by the state. In the grand scheme of things, this is a much safer route to go, but it's a much lengthier route to go. And I will tell you, standing here now in June, I am legitimately concerned that I can pull this off before cold weather. So I don't want anybody surprised when it gets cold and.
You know, the other thing I talked about in your absence two weeks ago is that we set our own due date for this.
That's correct, with the state fire marshal?
Right, right.
You're correct.
So no one should be of the opinion that the state fire marshal came in here and said, you gotta have it done by August 31st or I'm coming back and I'm shutting you down.
That, that's correct.
We've never been indicated, we've kept the channels of communication open. The agency we're talking about approving this is the state fire marshal or one of them, at least.
One of the agencies.
So if there is a worry about not making the deadline, then it's going to be part of the conversation and it's gonna be made clear that if the deadline's shifting, this is what it's going to be and we're gonna make sure everybody's in agreement on that. So it's not gonna be a case of, of August 30th, we have to call somebody and say, you know, oh yeah, by the way, we're not gonna make our deadline. It's gonna be.
And the other thing was the conditional occupancy permit was a local occupancy permit and we have been getting the extensions or having that conditional extended.
Right, right.
While this is being done. So it's not like our occupancy permit is being revoked or anything if we don't hit that data.
Right.
And that's all correct and accurate. And the next meeting, when I get the drawings, I've already requested Jeff from SFC Engineering, who the town has hired as their representative on the sprinkler engineering part of it. He's present to update you on how he'll address that with the state fire marshal. We've already had discussions about it and he can elaborate on that, so you guys are up to speed. He doesn't have, as Matt just said, he doesn't have a lot of concerns of state fire marshal granting us that because he knows they're working, we're working on it.
And we say this all the time, but there are five selectmen, so if we need to put a meeting together and we can't get all five, then we should just storm ahead and do it with four, do it with three, just to have that, that meeting.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right. Any other questions, comments regarding the fire rescue station update? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I don't think we have anything else here.
No, you should be all set with him.
Okay, you're good, Mike. Thank you. All right, our next item. Let's see, all three of you have an item on here. Anyone want to go first?
Internship?
All right.
Who's on the clock?
Police chief. Come on out. This should be a quick one.
Good evening, board. Mike Jewett, police chief. A few months back around budget season, I had come to the board and we had budgeted for a new cruiser for this year. Part of the financing is I need approval for funds from the board so I can give the minutes to Ford Motor Credit. So that's what I'm here tonight to ask for.
And we have a copy of this agreement?
You have a copy of the agreement and I know, Madam Chair, that one of your requests in the past has always been an escape clause.
Correct.
Page two, section six. The same one as previous leases. And you should have the front page that lease that would require your signature to go ahead and move forward.
All right, excellent. I have one page. Does everyone have two?
You probably have the.
Is there not, there's not an amount on this page?
Yeah, this is the one I'm looking for.
What's the amount again?
I will approach it.
Approach the bench.
And.
Yeah, we just got this one thing. This looks good. We got that one?
Yeah.
Oh, all the other stuff?
Yeah, I just have the one paper.
Oh, that's the PDF that didn't open.
Yeah.
Can I pass it down? Here. There we go. I'm gonna pass this down.
And the amount.
I'm passing down the lease.
How much is it?
That's the agreement Lisa wanted to see.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have a copy of that in my folder. Okay, good. So this is assessed with the.
That's the full lease agreement.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to see. That's the one that does allow us, if we cannot appropriate the following year, then we are out of it, so it's not a multi-year.
You actually got that in the PDF. I'm not sure.
I don't have it in my folder, which is what I was looking for. The other thing I'm looking for is the amount.
I think Selectman Ford has that in his hand, I believe.
How many years? Six years? No, that's once a year.
For six years, okay.
Six, eight, so 48 and then that, yeah.
Okay, so is anyone prepared to make a motion on this?
Make a motion for the chair to sign the police cruiser lease agreement.
I would second.
All right, in the amount of. Yeah, I think we need, you said you needed the amount for them, correct?
An amount of $48,600 to be paid semi-annual of $8,988.57.
For how many years?
Six years.
Six years.
So I will accept that amendment and still second.
Okay, and like I said, in the minutes, make sure it's noted that we do have the escape clause in there in case we do not get appropriations for subsequent years.
Do you want the motion with the vehicle list, 2019, what?
So I will offer the friendly amendment to include for a 2018 Ford police interceptor utility. Larry, do you accept that amendment?
I do.
Okay, do you second that amendment?
I do, yep.
Okay, so we have that added to the motion. You're welcome. Any other discussion, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. I collect my paperwork back.
You may. You might need it.
Did you sign yours, Lisa?
I have not signed it yet, though.
It's the one signature.
Okay. All right, so that takes care of that item. Our next item, do we want?
The internship?
Let's go with our fire department ship. You have two items for us. The first one is a request for internship for Brian Kane.
Correct. The, good evening, board. The board should have had, I believe it's on a PDF file, a copy of what the school gave to the town that needs the town's approval.
There is just one thing that I did not see in any of the documentation that we received.
Go ahead.
What is he interning for?
Right. It is, if I have it correctly, any individual, actually it's a child, a kid, a junior, however you would like to call it.
A student.
A student can internship if they would like to seek in the future a career in the fire or EMS service. So that's what he is interning, his internship would be, is fire and EMS.
Okay, so he is interning as fire EMS.
Correct. There is a form there that says what the department is, so it would be Newton Fire and Rescue.
That wasn't actually filled in.
No, because we're waiting for the board to give the approval.
Okay, and if I recall correctly from my experience with internships, there is no charge to the town.
Correct.
For the internship. It is not paid by the town.
Correct.
The town also is not required to have an insurance.
Correct.
For this student to do the internship with us. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed those out as well. I take it you are in favor of accepting this student as an intern?
From what I've been told, this is the first and hopefully it's not gonna be the last. We did it in my old department for many, many years and we ended up actually having several of the interns stay on the department. We did have a few go to the other side, the blue side, but we will not hold that against them.
All right.
Highway department side, is that what?
That's the yellow side.
Oh, the yellow side, okay.
Okay, so does anyone else have any questions about the internship request? We need the chair to sign the request form for the school, the school document?
So I would move to have the chair sign the request form for the internship for Brian Kane.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes care of that. And our second item for you is, you want to move the Fire Danger Smokey the Bear sign?
Correct. The town warden stopped in yesterday, I believe it was, and asked me if the fire department would mind if the sign was moved to the new, the public safety complex. I know we spoke with the road agent in regards to getting a cost for the sign to be moved. He just, one, wanted the board's permission for, if the sign is moved, that he could move the sign. He sent me an email late this afternoon and if I remember it correctly, the sign was purchased by the past town warden and past chief, Dave Baker.
The fire warden?
The past fire warden, Dave Baker, and fire chief. He was both. The town, through the fire department, did purchase that sign. So the sign, the only question I had in regards to the sign, and we both had a conversation in regards to it, Merrimack Road is really not a busy street.
He's gonna see it, yeah.
The two ideal locations, one would be sitting in the front here on 108, and the other one I don't think could happen because the town does not own the property, would be the Junction Fire Station. Those are the two busier roads than Merrimack Road. I have no problem with it going to Merrimack Road, but that's town property. The board has to make that ultimate decision. If the board wants it out front, the board has to make that ultimate decision.
What about the, could we, I'm not saying do this, but the library or the.
Oh, town properties, as long as it's on town property.
Library would be cute for the kids.
That might be, yeah.
All right, well, I am in agreement that the sign needs to move from its current location, okay? We are, we are looking to dispose of the previous fire station property and obviously that fire sign is fire department, so we don't want to leave it there. As far as where we should put it, I kind of agree with you. You would think it should go with the fire department property where it is now, you know, the new department, but that's off the main road, so not a lot of people are gonna see it.
But since that station has no signage out front and you can't find the fire station, that would signify that there's a fire station there if you put it out there.
Yeah, that's the other part of those. Every one I've seen, every other Smokey has always been.
At a fire station.
The only thing, again, it's town property. The fire department has no problem moving Smokey. If it does get moved to that new station, to the new complex. If it does get moved to that new station, to the new complex, somebody has to give the proper location, because I'm sure at some point in time there is going to be a sign put for the public safety complex. Sure there's a sign gonna go out there at some point in time, and not just a Smokey the Bear sign. What I'd hate to see is the sign get, because it's cement, I mean, it's in there, get put in, then all of a sudden, ten years down the line, whatever, somebody decides we want to put a town sign out there for a public safety complex and Smokey's in the way.
So can, can we contact the Junction Church and ask them if they would have a problem with us putting it there? Because if we put it there, we'd have it in front of a fire station, we'd have it in front of a school. It would be on Main Street. It would answer all these questions.
Does it tell you if the fire danger is high and low?
Right, that one.
So what about that, if it's high, would we use the board that we got, ever?
No.
No?
No.
So only the sign? So you would want people to see the sign if it's giving you a fire danger. That's really important.
The warden goes to the sign every day, and he changes, if you look at the bottom, he changes it from low, medium, high, extreme, no permits issued. He changes it on a regular basis.
Do you post it on the website too every day?
Not the fire department.
No, okay.
Usually on a Facebook page.
Facebook, okay. What is the warden, you both, you and the warden, where would you recommend it would be best for public safety?
We both, I don't want to speak for him, but the impression that I received in the public view is better than not being in the public view, because a lot of people, especially on 108, they drive by and they look at the sign. Not saying everybody complies with what the sign says, but like I said, in, I, I did not know until this afternoon that there are some departments that don't even have a sign. My strong recommendation is to have a sign.
So anyone in the audience want to comment on this?
If I can.
You may.
Robert Desmalik, just a quick thought. We have another spot right on 108, apart from the library, which is the Historical Society Building. It may be on the edge of that property. If you think about it, it's near the gas station. It's a pretty good high visibility spot, because it's across from the general store, and it's probably visually better than the garden in front of this building or the library's, because it's kind of small front yard. So it might be possible, I think the Historical Society might be a mentor to having a historical fire sign there, and it's also an easy, convenient spot.
I like that idea.
I thought of that, too. The reason I didn't bring it up was I was concerned that it would disrupt the historical nature of a historical building.
We'd have to get their approval?
Because it's, it's a modern-ish sign.
It's a town building.
Well, not really. And it could be put on like the edge, you know, close to the edge of the property, so it's not actually sitting in front of the building itself.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll go back to, my question just died. No one answered it, but can we ask the church? Has anybody asked the church? Like, can we just ask that?
We'll have Ziggy ask them tomorrow.
Yeah, so let's get...
I'll get you an answer.
Because if they say yes, I think that's perfect.
I just found out about Smokey yesterday.
Is there any chance that maybe we will not use the Junction Station in the future?
Well, see, that's one of the things that I'm concerned with, is that we don't own that property.
Right.
And at any time, you know, we may no longer be able to use that property.
We may not have a vehicle to store there, you know?
Whatever the case may be. So now we have town property sitting on non-town property, and if the owners sell that property, you know, now, two years from now, five years from now, we would have to move it again. So I would be more in favor of having it located on a town property, so that I know it doesn't go anywhere.
Can I make a motion? We discussed this further by speaking to Bill Landry, library, fire warden, and then return to it based on their recommendations for public safety and what's, you know, and we don't want to distract from the Historical Society forever and...
Right. Now, we don't have any...
Still a town hall, library.
Time constraints or anything on making this decision, correct?
Why don't you sell the building?
Well, other than that, that's our only time constraint, right?
There is one other thing that I apologize I didn't bring up, since we're talking about Smokey the Bear.
Are we done with this one, though?
No, it kind of goes with moving things from the old fire station.
Oh, well, that stops. He's going off track. I know him. He's going off.
If you can have it on the agenda for the next meeting, that's more important to me, with no disrespect to nobody, is the memorial stone. I cannot get a straight answer on if that's an association purchase or a town purchase. That memorial stone should have been moved last November. So if that can get on the next agenda, so we can discuss it, and maybe by then somebody can find out who, is it an association's responsibility, or is it the town's responsibility? But that is more important than Smokey the Bear, because the grass is growing.
So we can see if we can find out who did the original purchase of that stone and then find out in order to determine who's responsible for moving it?
Correct. Because that already has its location.
Okay. All right, yes, we will get that added to the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have some answers.
And if the Board can reach out to the town warden, or I can reach out, whichever the Board wants you, whatever date you want to meet.
Could you reach out to the fire warden and ask him about, you know, some of the sites that were mentioned and see what he recommends as a preferred site?
I'll reach out to him tomorrow, and I'll send an email to Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other thought is we could take it down and store it until we know where it's gonna go, so it's off that property at least.
Yeah, I would only want to look at that if we were actually in the process of actually selling. I mean, we're just starting to list the properties, so if we got close to, you know, we get an offer, then we would have to look at...
But I don't think anybody needs to rush in where it's gonna be planted. I think we just, you know...
Well, that's why we're just gonna get some, you know, recommendations from people who know, you know, and see what the preferences are and why. Okay, so that takes care of that item. Our next item, special town meeting. Expanding the cable revolving fund. Who would like to speak to this?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
So the Cable Committee has recommended to the Board and to the town that they expand the use of the cable revolving fund to include information technologies for the town. That would include the transfer station, the town hall, the police station, and the fire station. The reason being is that we have replaced all the equipment here, and we have abundance of funds there, close to over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that I know we won't be using. So we're thinking it would be a good idea to, like I said, expand it to include IT. And we talked to DRA. They came down, two representatives came down, talked to us about it, how we could do it, and they said that what we should do is to hold a special town meeting. If we wanted to do this this year, we would hold a special town meeting that would allow the voters to come in and decide whether or not to expand the use of this fund. There are no appropriations, so it's not, per se, there's no money being asked of the town people, so you don't need a fifty-fifty vote. So in other words, you don't have to have fifty percent of the voters here to do that. I think that's about it.
You can only do this with a revolving account. You can't do it with any of the other accounts.
So it's just a meeting, a show of hands, then it's not a vote?
Similar to what we did with the bond for the fire station.
You can, I wouldn't think you could do a show of hands meeting, though, because we're an SP2.
You'd have paper ballot.
It's gonna be a ballot, yeah.
So the first obvious question to my mind is, what is the reasoning behind wanting to do it as a special meeting and not doing it at the next March regular town meeting?
The way we looked at it is you would have to still appropriate whatever money you need and put that into next year's budget, because you wouldn't be able to do it until after you had town meeting vote. So you'd have to wait another year to be able to, you know, use some of these funds. And rather than, I mean, we're just guessing, it could be anywhere between fifty and seventy thousand dollars is what we're looking to use. And that's all replenished with the franchise fees from the cable. So this money keeps coming in. A hundred percent goes into that account, and it's used to offset the cable expenses or the IT expenses.
Okay, so are we saying that we want to have this special meeting now so that we don't have to wait a year to use the funds?
No, so we don't have to budget another fifty to seventy thousand in next year's budget
Wouldn't be able to use it for next year.
For IT, where we can just use it this year. The budget would be seventy thousand less next year.
I like this idea, and I'm recalling the first time we heard the amount for the new sprinkler system. We were, we don't want to, we were talking about where to find these funds.
The sprinkler system is not IT.
I know, I know, but there was some talk about, you know, so we don't have to, so that's off the table, right?
This account is not potted. It can't be used.
It can't be used, yeah, it can't be used for that.
It was in the public meeting. We had mentioned stuff like that, so I just wanted to make sure this wouldn't inhibit it, but we, there's no way that can happen anyway.
No, this warrant article is...
I know what it means, yeah, I just...
It precludes use other than
Right.
cable or information technology, and sprinkler system...
No, I know, I just, but I'm wondering if you recall that conversation in the public meeting.
Yeah, we have other accounts that we locate.
That's a different one, thank you, because that would be, unfortunately, we don't want any taxes going
Right.
regarding anything by doing this.
So Mr. Desmalik's here to talk about it, too?
Yes.
For insight?
So, Mr. Desmalik, would you like to speak to this as well?
I would. Robert Desmalik, Town Moderator. And first, Madam Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board. I'm gonna split my comments into two areas, and I may do them in two phases. I think it's worth having a discussion on whether or not it's a good idea to use this funding approach. That would be the first area, and the second one would be what it actually entails for a special meeting. But the first question of whether or not this is a good funding approach would apply whether we made this decision at a normal town meeting or a special meeting, so I'm gonna address that first. And my understanding is that currently roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year comes in from cable franchise fees.
So roughly, yeah.
Roughly. And I think the balance is about a hundred and eighty-something, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in that fund. My understanding of the structure of the proposed warrant article is that all of the cable franchise fees would, instead of being, I guess, spent partially into the reserve fund and partially into the normal fund, would all go into the revolving fund. So that would mean we now have about a hundred thousand coming into the revolving fund, and then it looks like the amount going out would be that or a lesser amount. So the net effect on the taxpayers is essentially zero, right? Because that money, the ninety-five thousand dollars right now is income into the Selectman's account, as it were, which is used in the general fund. So it's not gonna have any benefit unless you, you're gonna see a hundred thousand come in, and if in fact the IT expenditures were only fifty thousand dollars, you'd see fifty thousand dollars more you had to raise from the taxpayers, and you'd see the balance of the revolving fund climbing at fifty thousand dollars a year, because the Cable Committee does a fantastic job of funding their equipment resources with a small amount of money, and so they have a kind of a surplus, or I don't want to say a surplus, but they have a significant balance.
You lost me on the, the having to raise fifty thousand from the taxpayers.
Okay, let me, let me run through that again. Right now, the spending, I don't know the exact number on IT spending. I think there's a, it ranges, I've heard a hundred thousand dollars is the general range, fifty thousand dollars, seventy thousand dollars. If it's less than a hundred thousand dollars, then under the structure of this warrant article, as I understand it, the balance coming out to pay for IT expenses will be less than the income we currently get from the cable company for fees, which means the reserve of that money is gonna pile up in this revolving fund. So you'd see, you know, let's say the number's fifty thousand for simplicity, just because you've mentioned that number, Madam Chairman. That would imply that every year fifty thousand dollars comes out of the revolving fund to pay for the IT stuff, but a hundred thousand goes in from the cable company, which would mean the revolving fund balance is now growing at the rate of about fifty thousand dollars a year, less whatever gets spent for cable stuff that's not, but that's small money. So I think, first, it's important to see what the number is. If the number for the IT expenditures is close to the hundred thousand dollars, then from the point of view of the taxes and the funds flow, it's just accounting, right? There would be no net difference. But remember, right now, ninety-five thousand dollars or so of that money goes into the general fund. So you're saying I'm gonna put a roughly ninety-five thousand dollars less in the general fund, which, and I'm gonna reduce the expenditures from the general fund by whatever the amount of the IT expenditures is. So if that number's ninety-five thousand in IT expenditures, it's zero change. If the IT expenditures are less than that, then of course you gotta raise money, more money from the taxpayers.
No, I see where you're going. I missed one thing. Can you clarify that? That's exactly what's happening? So we get five percent from the cable?
We get, right, five percent franchise fees.
And currently, point five percent goes to the cable revolving fund, and four point five percent goes to the general fund, correct?
Yes.
So are we saying with this revised warrant article, all five percent will go into this revolving account?
Yes, it will, yes.
Okay, so we are overriding that other warrant article?
Yes, and that's the way it was supposed to work. And we had the Board vote to make it the four point five and point five, and DRA said, your original article in 2013 said a hundred percent goes into this fund. We've, and I said, well, the Board made the determination, and they said technically they can't do that. So all of the money should be going into that account.
So the Board, so the four point five was never put before the voters?
No, no.
Okay.
So we've been doing it wrong before in council.
I'm not gonna touch that one. I think that's ancient history, and probably nobody can...
Well, it is, but it now explains why, you know, I was thinking...
So we're trying to fix that and correct that and, you know, have the hundred percent go into this account.
Bob does raise a very good point, though, a very good point, about the currently four point five percent goes into general fund. What we have for IT expenses may or may not equal that four point five percent. And if it doesn't, then that rest of that is in the general fund, which can, or unexpendited fund balance, which is sometimes used for end-of-year purchases or, you know, for giving money back at the end of the year to lower the tax rate, et cetera. And that would not be available, so...
We haven't, just so the Board knows, we haven't been using that. We haven't been using money to offset taxes. So that's not a problem. But we're gonna save on the other end by using it to pay some of the expenses for the IT rather than raising and appropriating. So it's gonna kind of wash itself out, like Bob was just saying.
I'd love to see some numbers. Do we have, I didn't fill this to help me...
Okay, so that was the first part.
Right, that's the first part. And so the issue there, and that's, this is really an issue for the Board, and it's a budgeting issue. It's not a moderator's issue. But as a taxpayer, I'll only mention a few things that come to mind in my mind about that. First, budgeting's important, and people need to know about that budgeting. And even if a significant amount of funding's coming through this payment mechanism, and that's perfectly fine, it would be important that there be some kind of transparency so people know, you know, what's happening there, because it's a pretty significant amount of money. And it is important to figure out so you don't end up with the balance either continuously growing in this revolving fund, and it's kind of limited. It cannot, you know, you can't divert that money any way you want. It's, we got a kind of a stretch out of DRA, it looks like, already, and I don't think you're gonna be able to get much further than that. I mean, you're not gonna be able to say, I need to use that money to buy a fire truck, because that's a lot. Without a vote, now, again, you can always have a warrant article that says, let's take money out of a revolving fund and repurpose it. And always do that. In the future, if it turns out there's a balance piled up there, the voters could turn around and say, you know what? Let's take, you know, some balance, a hundred thousand dollars out of there and use it for something else. But that would be a kind of warrant article thing. But that would be a kind of warrant article thing. So anyway, those are my thoughts as a, as a taxpayer. Now I'm going to put my moderator hat on. A special meeting requires, is something the selectmen can call it, however, we are in SB2 town, which means, and this has to be voted by ballot, we have to do our special meetings the same way we do our regular town meeting. Which means we have a deliberative session, we have a period of time after that, we have an election day where we have to run an election consistent with state law on that day, whether we like it or not. And there's a few minor things we may be able to shift around, but we are generally pretty tightly bound on how we have to run that election. So, a special meeting requires we do all the same things we do for a normal election. We need to have absentee ballots. We need to send them out to people that ask for them. We need a town clerk to do that whole routine. We have to have the supervisors of the checklist, have the checklist updating day where they're available at town hall for people to come in and, you know, update their registrations. We need to run the checklist. We need to have ballot clerks. We need a quorum of selectmen for the election. And I think, and I don't know for sure, but I think we have to run our election to the exact same hours we always do. Because I believe we probably have a vote somewhere in the history of this town that says what our election open hours are. And we probably can't get away with, under the state law, you know, like a one-hour election. We're basically going to be stuck for the day. Technically, we need all our booths set up, we need our disabled access booths set up, we need to do everything like we normally do it. And that's a lot of work. I think unless there's a compelling reason to do it as a special meeting, that we should try to find a way, if the board wants to do this, to put it before the voters at a normal town meeting. I think there's also a, a secondary benefit, because, you know, I'm a moderator, I think voting's a great thing to do. But the average person in town, you know, they got to get here before they go to work, they got to get here after work, they got to do an absentee ballot because they're not here, somebody's got to grab the kids so they can go to the polling place, et cetera. And I think the voters have a feeling that a special meeting, if we call it, is something really important. And if they basically get here and find one arcane yes or no vote, which deals with a budgeting structure, they're going to be kind of like, why am I here? Right? Why did we go through all this, you know, process? I'm standing in line, I'm showing my ID, all this kind of stuff, you know, to check yes or no on that. So I think it would be well worth trying to figure out if the board, for budgetary reasons, wants to do this. And I don't have a position one way or another on that. But if the board wants to do it for budgetary reasons, try to find a way to make it work at a normal town meeting. Because in the normal town warrant, this will be one of many, we went through them at the last town meeting, we had a bunch of, should we open this fund, should we close this fund, should we transfer? And people just bit the bit right through. If it's a special meeting, we may well find that we have a small turnout, and for some reason, because this happens in small turnout special elections, somebody gets an idea in their head of a very small group of people, and they win, even though you don't think they're going to win. Because for one reason or another, it got their attention, only 100 people voted, and 51 people for some reason come out and say yes or no, depending on what the mood of a very small group of people is. So I think we should reserve special elections for things where we really need to do it. Either some kind of emergency, or some great opportunity, or some extraordinary circumstance. And I would encourage trying to find a way to do this at a town meeting. And I think that might be possible, in that if we appropriated the money for the IT stuff the way it normally was, and this warrant article passed, then I think the board would be in a situation where you simply make the payments from the revolving fund, and you're going to have a surplus equal to the amount of the IT payments at the end of the year. You could even have a conditional warrant that said if, you know, Article 7 passes, that says we're going to use the revolving fund, then the budget is reduced by some amount. And I don't know, that's probably a DRA question, and I'm not a budgeting person. But I think, I would just encourage the board to consider ways to do this within the context of the normal annual meeting, because it saves a lot of workload, saves a lot of explaining to the community what it is, what's going on, why we're doing this, and gets us, you know, through that whole process. One final comment I'm going to make related to this, I forwarded an email, and I think probably most of you have seen it, from the state regarding some of the questions about this. It does appear that we don't have to worry about the special meeting 50% voter participation threshold that I was concerned about, and Bud Fitch from Secretary of State's office said, it looks questionable. Looks like the DRA did in fact confirm in writing that they don't feel that this vote would require the 50% participation threshold. And since they're the only people that would complain about that, or theoretically bring an action about that, that since we have it in writing from them, that they're okay with it, that's probably not an issue. But that doesn't make the rest of the election process we would have to go through go away. So anyway, those are my comments, and I'm happy to answer questions.
So what was the main drawback with waiting to a normal town meeting?
We wouldn't have the funds unless we appropriate them in the budget.
So what are the, what would the funds be used for specifically?
Probably what the contract for.
Yeah, IT support, your phone systems, your printers that you need, your computers need upgrading. There is things like subscriptions for Office 365, software.
But the Office 365 and stuff like that, that would be contractual, right? So that would, that would make it through a default budget?
No, that's like a yearly thing, that's not a contract.
It's a subscription.
Right, it's a monthly subscription.
Sure about that?
Yeah.
Wait, that would be included under IT?
What?
Would that be included under IT?
It's not a contract, he's asking if it's.
No, if it was a multi-year contract, it wouldn't be in the.
It would be included in the IT.
It would only be able to be in the default if it was actually approved by the voters to do so. Because that's the multi-year, you can't appropriate in one year for multiple years without the voters being able to say yea or nay to it.
So if, if our budget passes in 2020, it's not, nothing to worry about, frankly. But if it.
Well, tax rate will go up because we're putting a lot more money.
Well, it could go up. It could go up.
As you know, the fire department is with all the trouble with the vehicles.
But we could also adjust. But the, so if, if for some reason we go to a default budget, then we're in the hole how much? Roughly.
Well, last year we were in agreement to do a contract with Amon, and I guess it didn't go through because they didn't tell us it was only a five-day quote. So we didn't buy any new equipment. We've got nothing on lease this year for buying new equipment. And, you know, like Diane said, this, this would help us because DRA agreed by repurposing this article. It could be for your phone systems and your internet and all these other things that we're paying for every department. And you know the departments are growing, everybody's got a computer, or they need one.
But it, it sounds like it's a, it's a belt tightening, not, I'm not going to say nice to have, but it sounds like things that, because what I'm talking about is, is best-case scenario, the budget passes, it's not an issue. But if it didn't, we'd be tightening our belts, which we'd be doing anyway. Across the board.
So what would happen is, anybody that's running Microsoft Windows 7?
Yep.
You would no longer be supported.
Wouldn't be able to use those systems anymore.
Right.
Well.
You can use them, but you just don't get updates, okay? So just so you know.
So what I'm looking to.
That's just one thing.
The only thing I'm looking to figure out is why we need to do it in August and not March.
The only reason we thought we would try to get it done sooner is that it would help with budgeting season, because it would come out of everybody's budget. They wouldn't have to worry appropriate funds for anything with IT. That was what we were trying to accomplish.
And the money's available, and we tried to do this last year, but we had too many open-ended questions, and we wanted to make sure we had everything in place. DRA said that other towns have done this. It's not a full-blown 12-hour voting day, it's a one-hour, like we did with the.
Well, I, I, I'm not so much concerned about the full-blown 12-hour day or two-hour voting window, or one-hour voting window. What I'm concerned about is this special election, it's not in the election budget.
Correct.
Okay, which means there's going to be costs for the poll workers, there's going to be costs for the supervisors of the checklists to be here, there's going to be.
If you remember correctly, when we did the bond for the fire station, there was not that many people here that, like, you only need one checklist person, and, you know, it wasn't a big expense. We did paper ballots. I've got all the samples from that meeting. And it's, you know, you can have the polls open for, it's not really affecting the towns' people, it's not raising money, it's just repurposing this account so that we can use that money.
Right, no, I, I'm not saying that we don't need to do this. I'm just wondering if we really need to rush to do this. That's my question.
Well, like Matt said, if the budget passes, you're okay, but your taxes are going to go up with all these, you know, additional budgets that need to go up.
I'm hearing like, across purposes.
I'm a little puzzled, if I may address before your thought. I'm a little puzzled by the idea that there's an issue currently, if the budget, if the IT stuff still, just stayed in the budget like it always was. Right?
But we keep adding to it.
Add to it. Go from 50,000, 100,000, whatever the number is. Whatever shift you make there is, remember, the money you're spending is what you're, is you're offsetting, you're taking it as income already.
We're not supposed to be using that money to offset taxes.
Different issue, but, but at the moment, we are. So from the tax rate point of view, whatever we spend that money on, it doesn't matter. Right? It could, it could have been paid to the IT stuff already. So if the IT stuff stayed in the budget, and we fixed it all at town meeting, I mean, as in fixed the, the allocation of the funds coming into the revolving fund, and the, the budget would be what the budget was, it would just be the question of whether you actually spent that money or spent it from the revolving fund. So you either end up the year kind of like a surplus, which just goes back to the taxpayers, or you'd end up with the, you know, if the revolving fund passed at the town meeting, then you'd have that payment being made from the revolving fund. I think, I don't see any effect other than that you end up not spending the money you budgeted, right? And if you raised and appropriated the $100,000 for IT services and just didn't spend it because you spent it from the revolving fund instead because you got a warrant article that said you could, it would seem at the end of the year, you're going to have $100,000 left over, right, in the, in the budgeted funds, which would be just like money that was not spent otherwise. And then presumably that just goes back to the taxpayers. Because I don't see it as a difficult problem from a, and there was, if we had a warrant article that simply said, we're going to take, we're going to put all the income from the, from the.
Franchise fees.
Franchise fees into the revolving fund, and this year we're going to take $100,000 out and transfer it into the general fund, right, which could be a legitimate warrant article, then that would have exactly that effect, right? It would be exactly the same scenario, tax-wise.
The, you know, I was in favor of when we did the bond special meeting, because we really had to. We had to correct something that was broken. We're actually told by DRA, I believe it was DRA, told us, you have to do this in order to move forward. We had to do it. To me, this is kind of a, we want to do this because this will help us in budgeting season. But I, I tend to agree with Bob where special, special meetings should be special meetings for a purpose that when people get in here, it's clear to them why we're doing a special meeting. And not, because I guarantee as people walk out of here, they're going to be saying, why didn't you just wait the, whatever it is, four, five, six months? You know? I, I think, I think this goes on in March, in, in my opinion, and then we're just going to have to, we're going to have to manage the budget as we are supposed to do. If it, if it, if it passes, and, and the other thing we haven't thrown out there, too, is, is there's always a wild card here, no offense to our friends in Sanborn, but Sanborn's always a wild card. We never know how that's going to affect our voting, right? They, they could raise their budget, and people are going to turn around, and on our ballots, going to vote no, and we have no control over that. I mean, that stuff happens, and we tighten our belts, so.
Kate, you had something you wanted to ask or say?
Well, I'm hearing two different things. So basically, right now, we want to decide on now.
Special meeting or wait till March?
Right, the question is whether or not we.
It's not like we're not, it's just when? Is that what I'm getting here?
It, it's, do we have a special town meeting for this purpose?
I get that, or we do it at the normal time.
Good.
Right.
Right. And I'm not, just from what I'm hearing, clear, I mean, of course, I want to save taxpayers' money, that's, we all do. I'm just not clear from what I'm hearing yet which scenario, like, I'm kind of in alignment with what I'm hearing, like, I know the, the amount of people you want to turn up, I don't know the expense of the election, I can't tell if it only needs to be two hours or a full day, as you're saying. So there's some things that are still unclear for me.
I'll, I'll address the length. DRA seems to think you can have a short meeting. They don't enforce the election law. The people that enforce the election law think we need to follow 40 calling 13 and have the regular meeting length. And I guess the only question is, if push comes to shove, the guy that's suing us is the guy that told us we need to have, you know, the, the full regular meeting. And I sometimes disagree with them, but me, in this case, I would just go with the flow. In other words, I would not take a position that said, okay, look, I got one opinion from DRA that says I only have to keep the polls open for two hours, so I'm only going to open the polls for two hours, and then have the state on the other side have some voter complain, or by the way, a vendor complain, maybe anybody complain, and then say, well, you know, you didn't have a legitimate vote, you didn't vote, you know, you didn't keep the polls open long enough. Right? So I think we're pretty much stuck on taking the position of the state administrate, you know, the state, Secretary of State's office, basically.
Erring on the side of conscience.
Yeah, we, well, we have written ideas from both sides, right? And I think we have to take the safer case, right? If one guy says you can do it in two hours, and everyone says, no, you got to be open for eight, or 12, whatever the number is. You got to be open for eight. Now, there is a little thing worth checking, which is if we never had a town meeting vote on the hours of our polling place, then the selectmen, I believe, can set the hours of the election. And that's a research question going back, and Nancy, you may know the answer to that, I don't.
The 90s? Would it be the 1990s?
It could be any time in the past.
And what was that again?
Well, SB2 was the 90s, I thought.
Right, and I, I don't recall off the top of my head if there's, if there's a provision in the SB2 statute that sets a minimum set of hours, but there, there, it's possible, it's possible and worth exploring if the selectmen can set a shorter time. But we still need to do the absentee ballots, we still need to do the check-in list, we still need to do all that kind of stuff. And again, I think that if it's possible to achieve the same result with a little extra sort of behind-the-scenes paperwork and budgeting, and have the vote happen at the normal town meeting, I would strongly recommend that.
I.
Because in particular, and again, I think voters there are more likely to be well-informed, they're more likely to understand the issues in front of them, they're more likely to make the right choices, you know, with a lot of information about each item on the ballot. And I have a concern that voters being called out for a special meeting that are either going to be very well-informed because it's something like a bond issue or some other thing, or they're not going to be informed. And then the result's a little bit unpredictable. And I don't know, I haven't kind of tried to figure out what happens if you end up with a no vote on this. But that's kind of probably a pretty complicated thing to unravel.
I mean, it's one of those things, too. If we could change the hours of our town meeting, why didn't we do that when we had a blizzard? You know what I mean? I mean, granted, granted, the notice wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have had enough notice, but, you know, I don't know.
I think that he was referring to for special election.
That's what I'm talking about. Is if the Board of Selectmen, as he said, Bob said, question mark, the Board of Selectmen might be able to change the hours that people vote. And I said, if we had that power, I would have, I would have said 30 minutes during the blizzard last year. But I, I'd do it this way. But I'd do it this way. Given the lateness of the hour, I'd like to poll the board and see where they're leaning right now.
Yeah, I wanted to see what Larry had to say because he's been pretty quiet.
I was looking at him, too.
So question one, do we have the dollar amount of what's in the IT section of each department right now, as far as like fire, police?
I mean, I've been just looking at it and I've come up with the roughly well over $50,000. $30,000, it's 35, I think this year, it's $35,000 for the IT contract alone. And then I haven't, you know, gone through. But then again, that's just support. That's not counting the upgrades that we need to get done, so.
That's what they budget for now?
Just that, right. Well, no, that's for next coming year.
No, so this year.
Oh, for this year?
Just roughly. What I'm trying to get at is if it's, say, $100,000, so their budget's going to be $100,000 less next year and not move that to another line item.
Right. You don't want them to do that, correct?
Correct, okay.
I don't think you do.
I don't have an issue waiting either way, the special meeting or March. Is there a critical that we...
No. It was, like I said, it was just to ensure, basically...
I'm in favor of the, of doing that. It's just a matter of the meeting versus March.
So again, just so we can leave the topic, poll the board. I don't think we should act now at all. I'm not in favor of acting. If anything, we do this in March.
In March.
Yeah. Kate?
I would, from what I'm hearing at present, I mean, I'd like to see numbers. I would say March would probably be of more benefit to the voters turnout and the things that matter, people getting informed in the issue and possibly getting a decision that would benefit everyone.
My concern is not just the fact that it's a special town meeting, but we're actually changing that 4.5% is no longer going into the general fund. And it may or may not equal our IT expenses. So I would like to see what that effect would be before I actually follow through with it. And we're proposing in August 12th, starting with the public hearing. I'm also concerned that we may not be able to get enough information out to the voters about what this is, why it's needed, and why they should come and vote for it. So I don't think I want to do this. I'd rather see it go on the March ballot also. I'm in favor of doing this. I just don't think I'm in favor of doing this starting in August. So at this point, it sounds like we're, the majority of the board is willing to add this to the March warrant article, but hold off on and not hold a special meeting for this.
Ann wants to see the numbers.
Well, yeah, we'll see that when we... We have this put on the March ballot as part of the discussion about warrant articles going on the ballots later this year. We'll be getting those.
Get all the figures of 4.5%.
Yeah, and we'll be asking for that kind of thing, that kind of information.
Slightly off-topic, can you include a computerized document storage under an IT budget? So in case we had the fire and all those, I mean, if there was enough that we could slowly move the documents that are going to, if anything happened with the fire.
Well, that's one of those things that we need to look into.
Is that an IT?
Yes, it is an IT thing.
That would be good.
It is an IT thing. However, it could be quite costly and we would have to decide whether or not it's something we actually want to invest in. So that is a topic for another day.
Okay, but that is IT, good.
Yes, that is IT.
That would definitely be considered IT.
All right. Bob, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking around, too. You've been here since six.
Just to close this out, we are agreeing that the board is not going to take action and call a special town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Correct? All right, so that's where we're at. Okay. Recreation, bookkeeper memo about lifeguards and lifeguard supervisor. Has everyone had a chance to review the bookkeeper memo?
Yep.
All right. So part of what I see being asked is things like, what are the job descriptions of the lifeguards? What are the job description of the lifeguard supervisor?
So my, if you recall from the last meeting, this is now a fire department position. And I would kick this to the fire chief to answer. And if the fire chief needs to bounce it off of anybody from the rec commission, he can certainly do so. But it's all fire.
I think part of the problem is we don't know what the supervisor's job is.
And the fire department can tell us that because as, as we know from the last meeting, the fire department supervises.
But just starting July 1st, who's doing payroll? Who's doing the schedules?
Well, payroll is done, but the fire department has payroll, right?
Right. But I mean, who's, who's tracking the kids, the lifeguards?
Well, talking to him, from what he told me, was that he was only supposed to sit on the interview process and that...
Which he didn't do.
He had no...
You weren't here last meeting, Larry.
Right. But after I read the email, I talked to him and he said he had no inkling about doing their schedule, signing off their pay.
Who had no inkling?
The fire chief. That that was part of the deal.
The fire chief himself?
So at the last meeting, the fire chief said he was going to take this on. We made it.
Oh, let's find him.
Kate's nodding her head.
Yeah, I was there. It happened.
All of, all of these questions should be answered by the department head, as it would be in any case. Like I said, if he needs to bounce that off of any questions, off of anybody from rec, I could be the first phone call, but there's other meetings. What I'm getting at is, and in the board, I'm preaching to the choir, I think, with the board, is rec commission is made up of volunteers. They should not be managing any employees of the town. So we have, we have people in the fire department who are paid accordingly and have management backgrounds, so.
Right. So let's, so job description or guidelines for the lifeguards. You're saying we should have the fire chief review the previous year's ones and advise of any update?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a lifeguard contract? We used to have a lifeguard contract.
I think what I'm saying, Lisa, is everything in here is going to be answered by the fire. I don't think we need to go through each bullet in this meeting.
I'm just making sure that we do agree that all of this information will be provided. All six bullet items will be answered by the fire chief.
That's what I think.
I've heard a little different. I think the bookkeeper did ask the fire chief if this was some of the stuff the supervisor is going to handle. He said no.
That's what I just said.
And if he is, he's going to get, want to get paid more. So we're starting in a week and a half and, or two weeks.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what was stated at the last meeting and agreed to at the last meeting.
That's what you told me the other day.
Okay. And people aren't here to discuss it, so.
Okay.
I think I would, I would go ahead with the thing. This goes to the department head. If the department head has, I'm not even going to say it again because I've said it four times already. But that's just me.
So, yes, I would ask that you send this memo to the fire chief and have him address it.
I'm going to review the minutes to, I'll go look at them from when I thought he said he was going to do this. Just one thing, didn't our interns, do they have, they got their CPR training already? Weren't they, they were going to get it? Has it happened?
One already got it. The other two should be in training currently.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and they're not interns, they're...
Oh, yeah, hired.
Yeah.
And I see a contract here. This is the contract we're going to use, the one from, where we're going to see who.
Well, that's part of the question. That's part of the question.
Sounds good to me.
And so I'm okay with that, too. So send the bookkeeper memo to the fire department, to the fire chief, to get his input.
To get his input or to provide answers?
That's what I mean by to get his input, to provide the...
Well, input's going to be different to him than answers.
Okay, so specifically?
Yes, we want him to provide the answers to those questions.
Okay.
And looking at, though, the guidelines that we've all read from this memo, they appear fine to me from 2012. Can't see anything we're missing.
Yeah, I don't see anything now.
And we also have a memo from the bookkeeper regarding signature authority for the building department, since we do have our new building inspector slash code enforcement officer. He will assume the same duties as his predecessor and do those signatures.
Yeah, in time.
Anyone have any objections to that?
Do we need a little time, though? Like, that's going to occur.
No, that's part of his duty, so that's what we're saying. So it starts now. So that's the response to the bookkeeper's memo. Who's going to do it? He is. Next one is for Larry to respond to, the electronic messaging board grant awarded.
I think you missed I.
Oh, did I miss?
You missed I?
Oh, yep, I missed another bookkeeper memo, sorry. Country Pond Lake Association, the bookkeeper went and looked for the information that we had asked for regarding whether or not there had been any previous payment to this organization. And there have been none for this purpose. I don't think it really changes how the board felt at the last meeting that if we were to start doing these kinds of donations to 501(c)s, then we would be opening a can of worms.
So what about the Boy Scouts? We normally, they have a Halloween party. We pay for the DJ. I think we also pay for food.
Right, but you also paid the DJ. You're not paying the Boy Scouts. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. But in, but I don't want to spend any more. So are we, we're not doing this? Is that the...
Seems like we can't yet.
Well, we have Larry here who was not at the last meeting.
It's $180, just so everybody knows.
Before that, we voted to give him the money, right?
Yeah.
And then last week's meeting, it came up.
I had laughed, I think.
The vice chair said that we don't give money to nonprofit. And that's why it's back on the agenda. Because originally, we approved, what was it, like 200?
$180.
$180. I did approve it originally at the first meeting. So is the question back on tonight if we're going to continue with the $180 or just cancel the whole thing?
Yeah, so the check was pulled.
Right, I saw that.
Because it was a question about whether or not we should be paying...
A nonprofit group.
A nonprofit. Since we had put before the voters the Meals on Wheels, Dare, et cetera, this is another...
So that we need to add it there?
Program.
We need to add it to that list.
To that list, is that the idea?
Whether we need to add it to the list or we need to have a separate warrant article for this particular purpose. That's the question that was raised. And that's why the check was pulled. Because we're not paying any other 501(c)s to... Essentially, it's a donation to cover the cost of something that they're doing. That's what it is.
But it is of benefit to the entire town of a public beach belonging to our town, so. I kind of get that it's a little different. But I'd like to do what's proper. I don't know, I'm not sure.
So as far as them doing, I know exactly what the program is. I'm in favor of the program, you know, which is to have people just getting information as votes go in and out of the pond. The other question that was raised at the last meeting was, you know, this is Country Pond that we're talking about. It's in both Kingston and Newton, you know?
Kingston donate, you know?
I don't know.
Don't know. I will, I will say this.
They might.
This is $180.
I want to make a motion to...
This is our third meeting. We've discussed $180.
I'll do the motion to reinstate the $180 check and reinvestigate it next year and put it on a warrant. But this year, let it go for the $180. Somebody second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion. I would...
I don't think it needs to be a warrant article. You don't even have...
I would break up that motion.
Well, I mean, if they wanted it every year, no?
Well, the board can vote like they did the...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, well, we can address any issue about a warrant article in November, December.
Reinstate the $180 to this lake association group.
Or authorize the payment of the $180.
Authorize the payment.
Yeah, I'll second.
So you're authorizing the donation?
Correct.
Yes. So it's authorizing a $180. Now, is that being paid to the Lake Association or to the state? Do we know? I think it's...
Lake Association because it's payroll essentially for them.
I'm just wondering if they're paying the state or, you know, because if they're paying the state, you know, or something like that, then it would be better for us to...
No, it's just support.
It's a state program, but it is a state program, is what they're doing. They're participating in a state program.
I remember I spoke to Greg, and I could be wrong, that the Lake Association, through their donations, is paying for the people to inspect the boats and the thing. They might be getting some money from the state.
Yeah, the, yeah, no, I don't think this is going to the state. They, they might have something else with the state, like Kate just said, but this...
Yeah, this would go directly to the monitoring of our lake to avoid invasive species, so we don't have the problems that all the other towns have, which once you get them, you can't undo them easily.
And by the way, this is the first year they've done it. It's a bit of an experiment. Might not happen next year, so we'll see.
Okay, so what's the next step here?
And we have the second.
All in favor.
Any other comments or questions?
I would just say, in light of it, it is a unique donation that will benefit this town and our public beach, and it is of need. It's, to me, doesn't, I could just find my way to say aye.
And for me, I just want to say that what they're doing is they are collecting information from our side of the pond, you know, for the water quality, the invasive species, et cetera, that sort of information, which will be helpful to the town, to conservation, and not just for a small, select group of people.
Yeah.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is unanimous. Please advise the bookkeeper to include that check. Thank you. All right, our next item. Electronic messaging board.
So basically, $1,000 grant for the messaging board for the $30,000. $15,000 come from the state, $15,000 from the town, which we use the fire station building as our soft match. So the total cost is $15,300 and we only had to pay $300 for shipping costs. It came in yesterday and it got its first deployment today. It's already working.
Good job.
All right, and there's nothing to sign or anything, right?
No, you already signed everything.
Get perfect.
We just get the closing paperwork pretty soon.
Good job, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Our next item, 2019 employee evaluation schedule. Everyone aware of the schedule?
Did you miss one again? Kay?
Kay.
Yeah, I don't want to do, no, just kidding.
I'll do Kay.
I'm trying to move along here.
I know, well, you're skipping it, it's just, we're going to have to go back.
I could talk about Kay.
All right, memorandum of agreement to reprogram the EMS fire police radios. Larry?
Well, that has to get signed by the chair tonight, which is this agreement that the state is reconfiguring their radio band. And if we don't go with them to do it, then we would have to pay for it on our own. It's going to happen in like August or September at some point, which will reprogram the police fire and EMS radios. It's a small grant, it's like less than $5,000. So, but we need the agreement signed, so we can continue with it.
All right, and I did read all of the documentation that came with it, the list of radios, the reprogramming agreement, et cetera.
You did get a list of radios?
Yep, so I saw all of that. And from what I can see is, it's going to be a state band. We're going to want our fire, police, et cetera, to be on that band in order to have our radios reprogrammed. Either we get the money from the grant, or we're going to be paying it out of pocket.
Correct.
I'd rather get the money from the grant. Do we make motions?
Yes.
Motion to sign.
Motion to sign.
The memorandum of agreement.
The memorandum, MOA, for the police radio grant. EMS fire police radio grant.
All right.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any questions, comments, concern? All in favor?
Aye. The motion is for the chairman to sign?
Yeah, just one signature. And Diane, can you scan that to Heather tomorrow?
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Once it's signed.
You're so good at grants.
Now we will go to L, employee evaluation schedule.
Probably Kay.
I don't know why mine doesn't open.
The schedule that the board has is actually your regularly scheduled meetings. And I think you guys said that you would maybe meet on the off weeks, so we don't bog down our regular meetings.
Yes.
As long as that's the only thing on that agenda.
Yeah, I'm thinking if we get, get them in on a timely basis, we might be able to do a couple of hours and go through a bunch of them.
It'll be informally considered a work session. It'll be a non-public session because it is evaluations. But if we look at it as a work session for that and not a regular, non-public session, then that's all it is, that's all it'll be for. We'll go through the evaluations. We have planned for that day in depth.
It's still posted as a non-public.
Well, yeah, that's why I said, it'll be informally considered the work session for this. But it will be an official, non-public session because it is employee evaluations.
So do you want to look at the dates and kind of come up with some so that we can, you know, let the department heads know?
Well, we already know that the first week of July will not be a good week. But then that would be the week for our regular meeting anyways, if we had one. So I'm okay with saying no to that first.
July 2nd.
Yeah, because I'm working, Kate's gone, and I think Matt's gone, right? He's only leaves till yesterday.
Yep, so, and we'll be discussing that in the other anyways. But for right now, we're just going to discuss calendar to pick some dates. So I would be, have we started getting in the evaluations?
I've received a couple, yep.
We have a couple already?
Yep.
I mean, I can meet the first, that Monday.
Wait, what are we, we're looking at these dates, correct? Additional dates.
All right, so rather than that first week, since it's a holiday week anyways, what if we were to look at, starting the following week, which is the 9th?
I will probably still not be back.
All right, how about you, Matt?
I believe I'm here.
I'm here.
You're here, Larry?
Yeah.
All right, so there's three of us here now that we know can be there. That's enough to have a meeting. So let's plan on the
9th.
9th as the first one, and
How long do you want to spend?
I am hoping to, we are going to spend no more than 90 minutes.
Total?
So how many do you think you can do in one night?
The goal is to go through them quickly, based on what the circumstances of the individual evaluations are. But yes, the goal is
The department heads here to go over them maybe?
Yes, oh, yes.
We
Are only the ones that are proposing the
The, we will want the department heads, if it is not a standard, if there's highs or lows, you know, highs as in over exceeded or lows need some help, then we would want the department head here to explain. Otherwise, we would not need the department head to look at whether or not the employees were good employees.
Here's where it's going to break down. I'm not saying that it's going to break down. I'm saying the way that it will break down is if the department heads do not turn it, as we look at these names, and I don't have to read off names, but as we look at these names against the date, if we've only got one or two when we show up, it's not even worth getting in the car. So they need to make sure that they have all those names checked off, filed, ready to go. As Lisa said, if they have highs and lows, they need to be here. We need to be told if, if they can't do that. I don't, I don't want, I don't want to come down and find out we only have one name to look at.
Yep. So I'm not even really concerned with when they get them to us. I want everyone to try to get them to us at the same time, or as close to the same time. I don't want to be saying that these three departments need to have them to us for this meeting. These three departments need to have it to us for those giving three departments a longer time period to get them to us. All departments have to get them to us, other than the one department we discussed at our last meeting, who was granted an extension. The rest of the departments should be moving to get them to us ASAP so that we can start doing them. That way, as we have our meetings, we're not held up because there was one or two departments who were delayed. We're still going to have a set number of evaluations that we can review, go through, and get them out. That's my key. That's the different way I want to try to handle it this time. Whereas before, we were working department by department.
Yeah, that probably makes more sense.
All right, so you understand what it is I'm asking for? And then this way, yes, I do hope that we have a couple now. We'll have more for our next meeting, and more and more will come in. If we haven't gotten them in, then we'll cancel our meeting because we're not going to come in for that. And we're going to be reaching out to departments and saying why.
So 6 o'clock?
Yes, so 6 o'clock, that way we're out of here no later than 7:30. That's unagreeable?
Wait, like even on July 16th?
The 9th.
Oh, yeah, I'm not there for that.
Yeah, you're not here.
I'm here the 16th.
Larry, that's unagreeable, 6 to 7:30?
Hmm.
Okay, and of course, if we get done faster, we're out of here faster, you know?
I, I will not be here the 16th.
Okay, so 16th, that's a regular scheduled meeting, and we're not going to do it during a regular scheduled anyway.
Yeah, and I'm out the following one, the 20th.
You're out the 23rd. Are you back on the 23rd, Kate?
I'm here the 16th.
Oh, no, not the 23rd, the 3rd meeting?
You're looking at the 22nd is the date here, is that what you mean?
Yeah, June 23rd.
Well, I'm looking at July 22nd.
Or rather, July 23rd.
What about July 22, which is written down here? This is just tentative, this document?
July 22, that's a Monday.
Oh, yeah, I know. I was doing on an offset day because planning board is on July 23rd.
But when I have a meeting the 23rd
Yes, but we're doing these all as non-session, which means they're being done downstairs.
So the only reason we'd lose Jim.
That's what I was
We would lose him at 7:00.
Is the 23rd on there?
But if we can get them all done before 7:00, we're good.
And that's a good, is a good goal, you know?
Exactly, that's the reason I want to keep doing it that way, to try to, to try to keep us under a schedule.
Yep.
So you want the 23rd?
Are you around on the 20? Okay, you're not. How about you, Kate? You around on the 23rd?
I can do the 23rd.
You're already here on the 23rd?
Wait, the 16th is a no?
All right, so
The 16th is a regular meeting.
Yeah, but I see that there's a list, a date here.
Yeah, don't go by, that's just
Don't go by this.
Don't go by that. Okay, so the 23rd is our next one.
Correct.
Okay, what time?
6:00 PM.
It'll be the same thing, 6:00 PM. We like 6:00 PM, we're used to 6:00 PM.
Not to, not that we should change for this year because we've already agreed to this, but I'm immediately starting to think July is a horrible month to do reviews. Because it's vacations, and you probably get it in, in August as well. So something to think about for next year, whether it be, you know, May or June or something.
Next thing you know, we'll be back to Danholy.
Might be, you know?
We'll see.
Okay, now, our next, and just because we have to have them doesn't mean we have to do them all in July and August.
Planning board's meeting on the 9th too. Did we include him on that?
They're meeting on the 9th?
Yeah, so it was just me and you for the 9th, right? Or Matt?
No, Matt is here too.
Okay, so we have three.
Yeah, we have three. And even though planning board is meeting, Jim will be there from 6 to 7. Or he should be able to make it for 6 to 7. That's what we said. The idea is, with planning board being the same night, it'll encourage us to keep it within the window.
So you're just doing two nights then, the 9th and the 23rd?
Right.
Okay.
The 9th, 23rd, and a regular meeting on the 16th.
Yep.
Hi, Jim.
And then we will do
Where are we now? Are we moving on?
Let's see.
Okay.
23rd, 30th. We have the 6th and the 20th, and then the 3rd. So we've got, every two weeks, we have another meeting. You know, I am really in agreement with you about trying to not take up every Tuesday night in the summer.
Summer, yeah. I bet they won't even be ready.
Well, why don't you go longer then?
However, we could potentially not have a regular meeting on the 6th, but have just the non-public employee one on the 6th.
Wait, the 6th of August?
Of August?
Yeah. And that's when we would have our regular scheduled meeting, but not put, not put anything on a public agenda. Just do the employee evaluations. We typically do, do one meeting a month, you know, for July and August each year.
Something we also have to maybe take a look at is, some of the agenda items, do they really need to, you know, if, if we're voting, obviously they, if they need a vote of the selectmen, obviously they need to be an agenda item. But maybe some of the agenda items don't have to be here. I'm just thinking out loud here. But maybe there's a way the agendas can get shorter in, in August at least, I don't know.
So are you meeting August 6th just as to do the
Just for the employee evaluations?
So just so you know, on July 30th, you do have to come in for the manifest at least.
Right.
So I don't know, that's why I was thinking if you wanted to do that, and then you could skip the 6th.
So I'm okay with doing it that way instead, the 30th and no meeting on the 6th?
I think so, yeah.
I have a reunion.
All right, how about you, Larry?
Which one? July 30th?
July 30th.
We can't do it.
So we're not going to do, you're not going to do anything in
The 6th.
Well, I was just throwing that out to you guys.
I kind of like that idea.
I'm free.
You're free? Since we do have to sign a manifest anyways, it would be, we'd want to be coming in for that.
So we're having a meeting?
So I
If I'm at a reunion, I need to sign this somehow, right?
So
I didn't hear you.
I'm at a reunion on the 30th, I need to sign a manifest. Do I come in before? How does that work?
Uh, no, as long as we have three
Forum, you're good, okay.
Forum, signature on the manifest, we're good.
Jim's free the 30th.
Okay, good, so the 30th it is.
So August 6th is still happening, but just as a BOs meeting?
But we're just reviewing these. We're not voting on them, right?
Well, we're voting to
We're voting to accept them.
Okay.
Okay, are we having a meeting the 6th?
Yeah, or voting to award any increases, pay increases, if warranted.
That's a 6 o'clock too?
Yes.
So to rehearse, no meeting on July 2nd at all?
Correct.
So then your next meeting, after today, will be July 9th, and that'll just be non-public to evals, to do evals.
Right.
Okay, then you're going to have a regular meeting on July 16th?
Yes.
That'll be your regularly scheduled meeting?
Yep.
Then you're going to have, oops, let me go back here.
Manifest on the 30th.
Then on the 6th, so then you're going to have a meeting on the 23rd, and that's just going to be evals.
Correct.
Correct.
Then you're going to have another meeting on the 30th, and that's evals.
Correct.
No meeting on the 6th.
Correct.
At all, right? No, no meeting at all, so I'm taking it off.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then your next meeting, so the only meeting you'll have in August is the 20th?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Everybody's on the same page?
So what we are going to do is, we are going to, after the July 30th meeting, determine where we are at with our
Evals.
Evals, to determine how many more meetings we may need to schedule. But we're just going to schedule for July, and then see where we are when we're done with that.
Okay.
Okay? We good with that?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
All right, moving on. Next is central fire station broker agreement. This is a quick, easy one. Matt, I know you like quick and easy. You want to make a motion for me just
Well, I think, I think we have taken care of this under a non-public because it's a contract negotiation. I think we can skip this one.
You need to sign this one?
Did we make a motion to sign?
We did.
We didn't, so, yes.
Okay, so this is not, this is not the, the auction one?
Correct.
Okay.
The broker agreement.
Yep.
This is the broker agreement.
Wait, okay, so there's
For the realtor.
As we did a non-public under contract agreements.
Okay.
No, it was, it was disgusting.
Because it's going to be public anyways, the amount that you're going to put it out for, so
Well, af, yes, after, it's, after it's an agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
There, okay, there are two of them there. One has all the Xs filled in, and one does not. So it's up to you which one you want to do. You agree with
I looked at the one with all the Xs, I'm good with that.
Okay, so then you just need to sign that one.
Yep, so that's the one that I will be signing.
Okay.
Okay, our next item is the revised agreement for St. Jean Auctioneers. This is based on our previous discussion about whether or not we met the minimum bid requirements. We would pay the auctioneer fees. So everyone had a chance to review it.
I'd make a motion to have Lisa Gonyer sign this document.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, our next item. EPA general permit for storm water discharge. Nancy?
We received a letter from DES basically telling us that we've been approved and our discharge expires at midnight on June 30th, 2023.
Excellent. This is the MS
And it does say
Five, four, MS4?
Certified Endangered Species Act eligibility, you know, you see the letter.
Yep. But no signatures are noted? But no signatures are noted? This is just to announce that we passed, got certified, and we're good until twenty twenty-three?
Our first annual report is due September thirtieth, and we're working on that, so it'll be ready for the board, I think you have to sign that one.
Okay, good. All right, other business. So we've already discussed the fact that we will not be meeting July second, and we will not be meeting August sixth, so the board has taken the prerogative of reverting to one public meeting a month for these two months, in honor of the summer and vacations, et cetera. Does anyone have any other business to bring up? Anyone? Happy anniversary to Matt Carroll.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it.
Get home for him. You're a great asset, both of you, to our town, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you. So I'm going to move to sign the vendor manifest dated June eleventh, twenty nineteen, in the amount of a hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents for lifeguard background checks.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to sign the vendor manifest dated six eighteen, twenty nineteen, in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirteen dollars, three hundred and thirteen dollar, three hundred and thirteen, eight hundred and twenty-three cents. Ladies and gentlemen, it's so big, I can't even get the
That must be going to the school.
Of which, of which, one million, two hundred and fifty-four dollars goes towards
That's what you're missing, the thousand.
Thousand dollars, sorry, goes towards the July Sandborne Regional School District, and fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars from the EMPG grant for the electronic message board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to sign fire rescue station vendor manifest dated six sixteen, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and fifty-five and thirty-four cents.
My second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to sign payroll manifest for pay period five twenty-six to six eight two thousand nineteen, with the pay date of six thirteen, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move to sign the veterans' tax credit for MAPS six nine twenty-eight for tax year twenty twenty.
Second.
Any dis
Twenty twenty-one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.